Good evening. We will call the Monday, January 27th, 2025 meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to Order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. It's great to see a great crowd out in the audience and for all of you listening online and watching online as well. I will ask, we'll move to the invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Pavan Patel to introduce his guest for the invocation.
Thank you. For tonight's invocation, I want to welcome my good friend and our former city councilman, Chris Davis, and our current PWIC Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Chris Davis. I'm also seeing Pastor Force of Life Fayetteville. It's my honor to bring the invocation for Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Let us pray. Gracious Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. It's a day we've never had before. It's a day we'll never have the opportunity to live again. So God, we pray that we live it to the best of our abilities. We thank you for this opportunity to come into this venue so that the leaders of this county might lead us into things that truly lift this community. God, we thank you for all of those who serve in our armed forces and those who serve in the public service sector. Continue to keep our hearts and minds focused on you. We pray that your Spirit of unity and service might endow us and empower us. And we just thank you, God, for what you're doing in and around us, God. And we just lean on you for all answers, and we know that in you all things are possible. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, who's our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Go ahead and ask.
Tonight, the pledge of allegiance, someone very special to me, Ms. Anna Byager, a local scout and freshman at Terry Sanford High School. I'll lay this in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And don't go anywhere. Commissioner Patel has a couple gifts for you.
Do you see any Girl Scout cookies I can buy? Let me know where y'all. I need some Girl Scout cookies. Scout. Scout. I'm sorry. Scout. I just want scout cookies, didn't I? I'll take the cookies. Doesn't really matter.
Thank you both for being here tonight. We'll now move to recognition of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. I want to recognize, I'd ask them to come to the podium, and I'd like to recognize Trevor Mayfield. He's a senior Cross Creek Early College, and Skylar McDonald, a senior at Cumberland International Early College. You'd like to share information with us tonight?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Trevor Mayfield, the Vice Chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and I live in District Two.
And my name is Skylar McDonald. I also live in District Two, and I am the Secretary of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
On behalf of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, we wish you a Happy New Year. Over the past five months, FCYC, the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, has been dedicated to making a positive impact in our community through meaningful service initiatives. And this is just the beginning. There's so much more to come.
One of FCYC's primary goal is to serve as the voice of the youth council in Cumberland County. We take our roles as youth advocates seriously and are excited to focus on one of our annual campaigns. February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and as a council, we dedicate this time to educating ourselves and others about the signs of domestic abuse in teen relationships and how to provide a safe way out. To further this mission, we are co-hosting a teen dating violence conference on March 1st at our office, and we would be honored to have you join us. We will follow, we will follow you up with an email to share more details.
We are also excited to launch our Kindness Matters Initiative. As part of this project, we will set up bulletin boards in our respective high schools where students and staff can pick a sticky note with a kind gesture to pay forward to someone else. In place of the sticky note, they will write their name, creating a visual representation of our collaborative effort to spread kindness. Our goal is to brighten someone's day and inspire chain reaction of positivity throughout our schools. We have brought a board to share with you, and we ask that you take a note and show your act of kindness to others this week.
We will also share with you valuable information on our social media platforms and host events to help better, to help our peers better understand the importance of this topic. We invite you to follow along next month on our Instagram at NCFCYC and join us in spreading awareness. Your support gives us the opportunity to grow as leaders and prepare to make a meaningful impact, allowing us to develop the confidence and skills needed to have a voice as future adults. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and come around here and let us congratulate you, and thank you for coming by. Are we taking a sticky note too?
Yes, sir.
There you go. That's why I called you come by. The clerk definitely needs one after today.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us.
And then so what can you do? And then you take it off, say if I take, take a picture with a new friend. Since I took off that sticky note, I would then write my name on it, signing that I did and completed that. Very nice.
It may take a little time.
You have to take one if you want.
You can't do but one thing at a time.
You got a cap.
You got it.
I'm going to put happy birthday to Chairman David. It's his birthday. Yes, it is.
Happy birthday.
Oh, yeah. Sure. You can't turn down the use. You can't turn down the use. Yes. All right.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chairman. Happy birthday to you.
All right. Teamwork makes a dream work.
Can you hold that one second?
Give us one second. We had a little accent up here.
It's real loud. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're supposed to sing. Oh, yeah, and then take one.
You can just take one.
You gotta take your time. All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move to recognitions. I'd like to ask the Board of Elections staff to come forward. I believe we have the Chairman, Chairwoman of the Board, Irene Grimes, and her staff. I'd like to ask Commissioner Tyson to join them at the podium. Just really want to recognize the Board with the Chair Irene Grimes, as well as the members of the staff that are here from the Board of Elections, Bill Helm, you'd think I'd know him for many, many years, Bill Helm, Mitzi Roberts, Sharia Dixon, Tasha Hill, April Powers, and Robbie Waring. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, Ms. Grimes, if you'd like to make any comments. Come up to the podium.
First, thank you for having us. I want to thank the County Manager, Ms. Shutt, who have always been Johnny on the spot, Mr. Moorefield, who probably at some point thought he needed to put up a cot in our office, and generally the Commissioners for all the support. You have been really, really supportive to this office, which is not always the case and doesn't happen in every county in the state. But I wanted them to be here tonight because this is an office that's not on the forefront, but it is essential. If we want democracy in our counties and state to work, then they are essential. And there's only eight of them for Cumberland County for 225,000 voters. And Angie and Vicky are not here tonight. Vicky is sick, and Angie is out of state when the, when the meeting was moved. It kind of all, you know. But Bill is the tech guru. He always has a bad look on his face. We got a smile out of him tonight, so that's an accomplishment. Mitzi oversees about 1,000 poll workers, which is like herding cats. Shamira is our brand spanking new absentee officer who put in some ungodly hours, just like everybody else. But at one point, I walked into the office and realized she had been, I walked in at 8:30 in the morning, and she had been there since 2:00 AM. So just to meet statutory deadlines and get things done. Robbie Waring, who is, I mean, always there. When you need something, Robbie's there. Tasha is the glue that holds the office together. And April, who says even less than everybody else, but again, when you need something, April is, is there. So without them, the office wouldn't work. Democracy wouldn't work. Elections wouldn't work. So I think we, we all owe them. And when I ask them to be here, they all acted like I was asking them to do a wood canal without.
Well, Chairwoman Grimes, just and to your staff, thank you so much, and please pass our regards to Angie as well. You know, this election, but yet every election is demanding, and we appreciate especially this one, the long hours and just the commitment to democracy, the commitment to allowing people to have access to vote. So we thank you, we thank you from the Board of Commissioners, and we'd love to let you come around and shake your hands.
You have to speak.
How are you? Good seeing you. Always fun.
All the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you've got to.
You all work so hard.
I think so, yeah.
You want to do your picture a quick?
You want to scoot back some so we can take a group picture, please?
There you go. Henry, jump in there.
And Henry, I mean Commissioner.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson. Ms. Grimes, get in here. Yep, yep. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Always a pleasure. Appreciate you.
Go ahead and move forward. We want to recognize one of our own and ask Commissioner Glenn Adams to go to the podium. And we want to recognize his appointment to North Carolina Central University Law School Commission.
Vice Chair read it. It's all going.
All right. We are so pleased that Cumberland County Commissioner Glenn B. Adams, who is a former, who's also a former Chair for this Board, he has been appointed to a prestigious 13-member commission task with the shaping of the North Carolina Central NCCU School of Law. This commission is announced by NCC Chancellor Kerry Dixon on December 23rd, 2024, with will set the agenda that concludes that Fayetteville Sett this law school has been a proud legacy providing access to legal education for North Carolinians. Commissioner Adams is an attorney and partner at Adams Burge and Brockham, Attorney at Law here in Fayetteville. He's also a long-term advocate for education and legal excellence, and his practice is very successful. We are proud and pleased of Commissioner Adams, and he's also a former member of the NCCU Board of Trustees, and he also has a deep understanding of institution goals and values. We appreciate you being appointed. We're very proud of you, and at this time, we would like for Mr. Adams, if you have some words to say.
Just to cut, what'd you say? With the camera? Where's the camera? You know, this is indeed an honor. It's always good when you can go back home and, and people at, where you came from are willing to take you back. So I graduated from North Carolina Central School of Law, so to go back and help my institution is most an honor and a privilege to be able to do that. Thank you all tonight for recognizing this, and a lot of work for us to do to be able to make sure that we have a first-class law school in Durham and in North Carolina. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move forward to the next item on our agenda, and that is the public comment period. County Manager Greer, I'd ask you to read the public comment policy.
The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the Board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute limit is attained. No time may be yielded by a speaker to another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the Board in the order in which their names appear upon the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the Board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment period is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of persons seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Written comments and/or supporting documents may be left with to clerk to the Board.
Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers?
We have one speaker, Chalaco Hurst.
Good evening, Mr. Hurst.
Good evening to the Commission, Commissioners, and citizens of North Carolina. I'm going to start off by thanking you for the work you're doing, especially for the homeless crisis here in Cumberland County. And then I'm going to transgress onto slightly peeved because you just recognized the individual who I feel like has integrity issues with the Board of Elections, Ms. Irene, because I went to their orientation and didn't receive my wages. Still haven't heard nothing from North Carolina Board of Elections, and I called that in. It's kind of odd, I come up here and you award individuals like that. And this day and time, we're going to need the city government and the county government to be on the same page. Right here in the city of Fayetteville, like I've said before, approximately three and a half years ago, there was a public protest, and members of the military drew their arms on grandkids, elderly people, and other people, and the only thing they seek was to go around the slave market house eight times and kneel for 46 seconds. You add that to what we have presently in the state of North Carolina, what I call economic slavery, even though physical slavery is over with because the wages are still set at 725, where everyone wants to address the issue of crime. You're going to have crime when citizens are impoverished. That's reality. And with the implementation of any tariffs that the individual who just got elected to office in this country, that's going to pass on further economic hardship to citizens who are hourly workers. So if we want to address the issue, not only the homelessness, not only of the high service costs in this country, we must address the issue of the wages, not only in North Carolina, because there are present at least nine other states, there used to be Jim Crow states in this country, they call the United States, that has the same Jim Crow hourly economic package, but they expect citizens to more or less raise themselves out of impoverished status. So if there's anything that you could do, because there's various cities across this state of North Carolina that puts steps in to safeguard the wages, please do so. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Hurst, before you leave, can you just give us your address, please?
134 Wayside Drive.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Speaker, are there any other?
There are no more speakers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we'll move to item one, approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, are there any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Davier, there's one change to the closed session. We need to add paragraph four, for you cannot discuss the economic development matter.
Okay. Members, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. There's been a motion to approve the agenda and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move forward to item number two, presentations. The first presentation is Period Poverty Awareness, and I would ask Amber Johnson to come to the podium. Let me read you a little bit about Ms. Amber Johnson is a proud senior at Grace Creek High School and a dedicated leader in her community. As an active member of student government, she helps shape school initiatives and foster student engagement. She also serves as a president of her school's diversity club and GEMS, Girls Expecting More Success, promoting inclusion and empowerment. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Amber Johnson, and I'm a senior at Grace Creek High School, an ambassador girl scout, and a proud advocate for youth equity and empowerment. Oh, speak up. Oh, I'm sorry. I serve as the president of Diversity Club and GEMS, and involved with student government, and I participated in the Holt Mills Youth Mayor Council Program during the 2023 and 2024 term. Today, I am honored to share my Girl Scout Gold Award project, Project Freedom Empowering Period Dignity. Period poverty is a pressing issue in Cumberland County. Many young girls lack access to essential menstrual items, which impacts their health, self-esteem, and ability to attend school. Through Project Freedom, my goal is to ensure that no student has to miss school or suffer in silence because of lack of resources. Since launching this initiative, I have taken critical steps to raise awareness and provide solutions. On November 9th, 2024, I participated in a community health fair event to begin conversations about period poverty and distribute vital resources. On December 9th, I led a workshop to educate the community about period poverty and to offer practical solutions and distribute brochures and to increase awareness. On December 18th, I held another community event to build momentum and share resources and to further inspire advocacy for this cause. On March 1st and 2nd of 2025, I will host a collection day to gather menstrual products for school in Cumberland County. This event will bring together community members and partners to ensure schools have the supplies they need to support their students. In addition to these efforts, I have been fortunate to collaborate with Senator Val Applewhite to advocate for sustainable solutions to address period poverty in our community. Together, we've worked to highlight the importance of supporting students and finding ways to ensure consistent access to menstrual products in schools. Beyond these events and partnerships, Project Freedom includes three components to ensure its long-term success. Workshops and education. I continue to host workshops in schools to de-stigmatize menstruation and to provide accurate information about menstrual health. The gap closet. I am working to establish a Girls Against Period Poverty closet in middle and high schools across Cumberland County. These closets will discreetly provide free menstrual products to students in need. Number three, sustainable support. I am proposing that Cumberland County allocate a portion of its annual budget to supply menstrual products for our schools. Allocating funding for menstrual products is not just a financial decision. It is an investment in the future of our students. With this support, we can reduce absenteeism, boost students' confidence, and ensure they are focused on their education rather than worrying about basic necessities. As a girl scout, a community advocate, and a leader in multiple organizations, I know the power of collective action. With the support of leaders like you, I believe we can make a meaningful difference in the lives of students in Cumberland County. Thank you so much for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to fostering equity and opportunity in our community. I look forward to working together to empower period dignity and to ensure that no student is held back by something as basic as their menstrual cycle. Thank you so much. And I also have brochures to pass out.
Thank you. I was going to ask you if we, if the Board had any questions for you, but you moved too quickly, so go ahead.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for your leadership and the next generation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Look forward to what you get. And I also have girls have.
See? There you go. That is my girl. That's my girl. Ms. Johnson, that was not part of your presentation. Just kidding. We'll go ahead and move forward to item B, fiscal year-end, June 30, 2024 audit results presented by Cherry Beckett LLP. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Robin Coats, Finance Director, CFO, will present this item and introduce our speaker, Linda Suggs, with Cherry Beckett, Senior Manager, and answering questions that you may have.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight Linda Suggs. She was our audit, Senior Audit Manager on our audit this year. Our act for report was submitted with an audit to the LGC on December 13th, and she is going to share the results of that with you right now. Thanks. Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here to present to you the audit results for the fiscal '24 audit. Here's the agenda of the things that I'm going to discuss tonight. First, I'll go over the client service team that served on the audit this year. We'll go over the results of the audit. We'll talk about internal controls and the compliance results. We'll talk about internal control communications. We'll talk about whether there were any corrected or uncorrected misstatements during the audit. And then the last several items are going to be our required communications that auditors are required to communicate to governing boards each year. First, here's the client service team, and it's not lost on us that you all are at the top because we recognize as a firm that we do report to you, and so that's the purpose of us being here tonight, to talk to you about the results. April Adams is the Engagement Director. She is responsible for all aspects of the engagement. She also is responsible and has the authority for the firm to sign all of the opinions. Our firm has a second review done on all engagements as part of our quality control procedures, and Dan Gogarty served in that capacity this year. He's at the same level as April Adams, so there's a second reviewer at that equal level. My name's Linda Suggs. Again, I was the Senior Manager on the engagement this year. I was responsible for communicating with the finance team, ensuring my team was doing what we needed to do and that all of the work got done. We also had Chris Tom. organizations, I know the power of collective action. With the support of leaders like you, I believe we can make a meaningful difference in the lives of students in Cumberland County. Thank you so much for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to fostering equity and opportunity in our community. I look forward to working together to empower period dignity and to ensure that no student is held back by something as basic as their menstrual cycle. Thank you so much. And I also have brochures to pass out.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I was gonna ask you if we, if the board had any questions for you, but you moved too quickly. So go ahead.
Johnson, thank you so much for your leadership and the next generation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Look forward to what you get.
And I also have girls have.
See? That is my girl. That's my girl.
Ms. Johnson, that was not part of your presentation. Just kidding. We'll go ahead and move forward to item B, fiscal year end June 30, 2024 audit results presented by Cherry Beckett LLP. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Robin Coats, Finance Director, CFO, will present this item and introduce our speaker, Linda Suggs, with Cherry Beckett, Senior Manager, and answering questions that you may have.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight Linda Suggs. She was our audit, Senior Audit Manager on our audit this year. Our act for report was submitted with an audit to the LGC on December 13th, and she is going to share the results of that with you right now. Thanks. Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here to present to you the audit results for the fiscal '24 audit. Here's the agenda of the things that I'm going to discuss tonight. First, I'll go over the client service team that served on the audit this year. We'll go over the results of the audit. We'll talk about internal controls and the compliance results. We'll talk about internal control communications. We'll talk about whether there were any corrected or uncorrected misstatements during the audit. And then the last several items are going to be our required communications that auditors are required to communicate to governing boards each year. First, here's the client service team, and it's not lost on us that you all are at the top because we recognize as a firm that we do report to you, and so that's the purpose of us being here tonight, to talk to you about the results. April Adams is the Engagement Director. She is responsible for all aspects of the engagement. She also is responsible and has the authority for the firm to sign all of the opinions. Our firm has a second review done on all engagements as part of our quality control procedures, and Dan Gogarty served in that capacity this year. He's at the same level as April Adams, so there's a second reviewer at that equal level. My name's Linda Suggs. Again, I was the Senior Manager on the engagement this year. I was responsible for communicating with the finance team, ensuring my team was doing what we needed to do and that all of the work got done. We also had Chris Thomas and Sterling Johnson as other key members this year. So now let's talk a little bit about the results of the audit. The audit was performed under two sets of auditing standards. The first standard is U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, and that's going to be applied to any type of entity, whether it's commercial or government. Those are the types of auditing standards that are used. The second set of standards are government auditing standards, which apply to you all because you're a government entity. We issued two opinions this year. They were unmodified or clean opinions on the financial statements. So that just says that your financial statements are free of material misstatement, and those are, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give. We also performed a single audit on the administration of grants that the county received. We issued two opinions there, one on federal compliance and one on state compliance, both of which were unmodified. Again, that's the highest level of assurance that we are able to give, so congratulations to the county on those great results. As I mentioned, we did single audit testing this year, and so this is the listing of the federal and state programs that we actually audited in 2024. There is a methodology for determining which programs are audited. They're not all done each year. They're done typically on a rotation basis. Every, the larger programs get done at least every three years. Medicaid is the exception to that, and it gets audited each year. We didn't have any audit findings to report on that this year. Next, on internal controls. This slide gives you some of the language that's included in the auditing standards related to internal controls. We don't actually issue an opinion on internal controls, but we do a lot of work with respect to internal controls as a part of our audit related to the significant transaction cycles. Examples of those are going to be, you know, how does the county receive cash? How does the county disburse cash? How does the county make payroll? And how does the county get all the financial information out of the system and produce the financial statements? And the standards say we're required to report on any deficiencies that are re-identified as a result of our procedures. So there's two possible deficiencies that we're required to report on. The first one is a material weakness, so that's going to be something that without this control in place means that your financial statements are susceptible to material misstatement. The other is a significant deficiency. It could be one internal control or maybe a combination of them that either, maybe they didn't exist or didn't operate effectively. And so it's less severe, it's lesser than a material weakness. We did not have any material weaknesses to report, so that's great news. I can't exactly say it blanketly like that for significant deficiencies. We didn't report any, but we don't, we, as I mentioned, we looked at just some of the significant transaction cycles, so I couldn't make that blanket statement, but you can take comfort in the fact that none were reported as significant deficiencies this year. Next, we'll talk about corrected or uncorrected financial statement misstatements. Once we received the trial balance from the finance office, we're required to report any adjustments that come as a result of the audit procedures. There were none reported this year, so that's either corrected or uncorrected. So what that really means to you is that the finance folks, all the people are following the prescribed procedures to record the financial information in the system, such that they're able to get good information out of the system for the financial statements, and you all can probably take comfort as well that the finance team is giving you good information. The next several slides are going to be some of the required information that we're supposed to give you each year. So the first one I also want to talk about is the accounting policies, significant accounting policies. Those are included in your financial statements every year, and they're typically described, all the policies and procedures that are in place. And we're required to indicate to you if there are any changes in those policies. So for the last several years, there've been a number of GASBIs that have required accounting changes, but this year is kind of a bye year, so there are no significant accounting policy changes to report for this year. We're also required to look in the course of our audit procedures as far as related to our party transactions. If we determine that there are any, we're supposed to identify them and test those, but just as a result of our procedures this year, there were none to report. Similarly, for significant or unusual transactions, those are going to be things that we're also trying to look for as we go through our procedures as well, and if we identify them, we would definitely take a look at them. Those are going to be something that's probably out of the ordinary type of transaction that management wouldn't run into all of the time, so we didn't identify any such transactions for this year either that we need to report to you. There are a number of significant estimates in the financial statements, and estimates are actually put in the financial statements by management based on their expertise and their experience and their subject, knowledge of the subject. So there's quite a few listed here. The ones that we would say are probably the most significant for us are going to be things like the unemployment benefit plan obligations, as well as the pension plan obligations. We do consider that a high-risk area and look at that as a course, in the course of our audit procedures. The financial statement disclosures are management's way of providing additional information and explanations to the financial statement users, so we, there's, intent is to be clear and consistent. So in this instance, if we're, they're supposed to report to you if there's anything that we feel like is not clear or consistent. If you were just to pick it up and read it, it seems to be they will be understandable to you. So there's nothing that we would report there in this regard either. As an external auditor, standards require that we do maintain a level of independence. We assess that at the time of our engagement letter, as well as throughout the course of the audit. So we have to think about independence if we're hired to do something else, whether it's either financial-related or non-financial-related. So we did provide two non-attest services for the county this year. Our firm did assist with the preparation of the financial statements, which was based on information provided by the county finance department. It was prepared by a separate team from the audit and received the oversight and approval of the county finance team. Keeping these services with a separate team allows us to maintain our independence for the audit. The other thing that we also did this year is prepare the data collection form, which is where we certify the results of the federal government audit. We have, again, we have a separate team that just inputs the information into the federal system, and then April Adams from our firm and Robin will go in and certify that the information is correct. So we don't believe that either one of these instances make us impair our independence, so we believe we were independent for the audit this year. The next couple of slides, there's a lot on those, so I'll try to run through those real quickly because they're, again, required information. We didn't encounter any difficulties with management during the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management during the audit, both of which are great things. We didn't have to consult anyone outside of our audit team for any matters related to the audit. Management does provide representations to us throughout the course of the audit, so we keep a list of those. And at the end of the audit, we, before we issue our opinion, we ask for the county manager and for Robin to sign a letter for us attesting to those things, because those are the things that we are basing our opinions on. We're not aware of any, that, any consultations where management went outside to a second firm and had got a second opinion on any of the matters related to the audit. There's no other audit findings or issues that we need to bring to your attention at this point. While our audit is not specifically designed to detect fraud or illegal acts, we are required to report any such things that we would come across during the course of our procedures, and there were none. For going concern, we're supposed to, prior to our issuance of our opinions, determine if we feel like you will be in existence in the next year. So I'm happy to report that you, we feel like you all will be here conducting the important business of the county next year. On this next slide, there's a lot of information here related to how our opinion affects these matters. So our opinion is based on the financial statements, which the basic financial statements include the statements and the footnotes, and there's a lot of other information around that. So first, the required supplementary information is going to include things like management's discussion and analysis, and there's the 10-year financial data reported for OPEB and pension liabilities. Those are things that we do not express an opinion on. The supplementary information is directly behind the footnotes, and those are really the schedules for, related to all of the funds. And those actually do tie up to the front statement, so that is something that we do extend an in relation opinion on, and so we're covered there. The other information is going to be things like this introductory section or the statistical section, and those are not, our opinion does not extend to those. That being said, we do look at the entire document. We do read it, and we do try to make sure that there are no inconsistencies related to the information that we are issuing our opinion on. The next slide is the upcoming GASBs. The, I'll talk about one of them because it's really the most important one right now, because that's the one that's going to be coming up this coming year for fiscal '25 is going to be GASB 101, compensated absences. You all do have an estimate of compensated absences already in your statements, and that's really just for vacation time earned by employees. So what GASB is asking you all to do, or the finance office to do, is to come up with an accrual for sick leave. We do know that employees do earn sick leave that is often rolled into service credits in the pension system when they retire, but what they're asking for an estimate on to be included in the financial statements is related to the payroll, any payouts in cash for sick leave that will be accrued, will be paid in future payrolls. So there's going to be a lot of historical information that'll probably have to be gathered and by your finance team, and they'll be coming up with that estimate. The other ones are in the future, and they're not really expected to have a big impact, but we are also looking at those along with the finance office, and we'll just discuss and discover if there's any significant impacts to you. There's one last thing to bring up. You all do file your annual report with the local government commission, and they ask us to take that information and come up with metrics, and they, we calculate this metric to see if there are any indicators that they're of concern. So there was one noted this year. It was related to one of the water and sewer districts. The operations were, I guess, at a loss, and I think we determined that it was primarily due to, there was a lot of maintenance expenses occur, that occurred in 2024. So just need to point that out to you and let you know that you all need to have, the board needs. ... getting things done to assist us, so thank you to her and her team. And now, happy to answer any questions if you have those.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll go ahead and open it up to the Commissioners for questions, and I'll go ahead to Commissioner Fairclough.
I was just going to suggest that you explain to the board what the GASB is. Most probably don't know what the GASB is, and maybe how they differ from the FASB.
Yep, that's right. GASBs are for governments, FASBs are for commercials, commercial entities. That's right.
You gonna tell us what it stands for?
Government Accounting Standards Board.
I knew you knew that.
Thank you for giving me a softball.
The accountant's going to.
Anything, anything else, Commissioner Fairclough? Thank you. Commissioner Tyson, you recognized?
Yeah, so, so basically, just to kind of summarize, the people of Cumberland County can rest assured that their money is being managed well and spent well, and that what we're budgeting is less than what we're taking in, and that there isn't any issues present to your knowledge based upon the information you reviewed.
That's a pretty good summary. I would concur with your results.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Fairclough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would move that the board accept the report of the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024.
We've got a motion on the floor to accept the audit as presented, properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, and thank you to the staff for the great work. We appreciate that very much. We'll go ahead and move forward to item three, consent agenda. Call on the county manager to present any item. I'm sorry, ask if there's anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda.
No, there's nothing that needs to be removed from the consent agenda, from staff's point.
Commissioners, is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been properly seconded. All in favor. Commissioner Fairclough, seconded. Raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go ahead and move to item four, items of business. The first item of business, A, Authorization to Transfer Funds to White Flag Shelter Program and Associated Budget Ordinance. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Ty Vault, Chief of Staff, will present this item and answer any questions you may have. Each year during the White Flag Shelter Program, we allocated maybe $80,000. This past year, we contracted with two agencies, and we need to make a transfer or a budget amendment to turn over to Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This item was unanimously approved at your January 9th agenda session, but it's being brought back this evening for reconsideration due to a change in the requested funding amount that was budgeted in Budget Ordinance Amendment B25005. At the agenda session, staff requested an additional $80,000 to fund a white flag contract between Cumberland County and Cornerstone Christian Empowerment Center, bringing the total up to $160,000. However, after that meeting, we discovered that funding for our other white flag shelter operated by Truvine Ministries had not been included. Therefore, staff is requesting the board's authorization to increase the original request of additional $160,000, bringing the total to 240,000, to be transferred within ARP fruited capacity within the white flag shelter program. We also seek approval of the Associated Budget Ordinance Amendment B25005.
I'll open it up for questions from the Commissioners. Vice Chairwoman Jones?
No, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vault, can you, for the, for the listening audience that may not know what our White Flag Shelter Program is, can you just go over that and explain that so everybody can kind of be on the same page?
Absolutely. So white, so the white flag shelters open up when there is a, when we have very cold nights, and so when we're at freezing levels. And so our two shelters that are being operating with the county, Cornerstone, as well as Truvine, they open up on those nights. Each of those facilities are able to house 50 individuals, and that's on top of what is able to be done over at a separate shelter like Salvation Army. But it's meant to keep those who are unhoused or don't have sufficient housing out of the cold during those nights.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chair Jones? Vice Chairwoman Jones, excuse me?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion approving to transfer $240,000 from the unallocated line item to the White Flag Assistance Project within ARP, freed up general funding capacity in the Associate Budget Ordinance Amendment B25005.
Second.
I probably said it too fast.
There's been. Your motion's fine, Vice Chairwoman.
Second.
There's been a motion on the floor to authorize transfer fund to White Flag Shelter Program and Associated Budget Ordinance B250005. It's been properly seconded. I'd ask for your, I'd ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in affirmative.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Vault, and I think you're just going to stay right there. I'll move to item B of items of business, Sheriff Deputy and Detention Officer Recruitment and Retention Incentive Request and Associated Budget Ordinance.
Turn it over to Mr. Vault.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager. This item was a commission request presented by the chairman at the January 9th agenda session. The board voted to refer the request to the American Rescue Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, which met on January 14th. The ARP committee voted unanimously to allocate $150,000 from ARP fruited capacity funds to support initiatives and retaining current detention officers. Additionally, the committee approved allocating $200,000 from the same fund to implement a recruitment initiative incentive program targeting experienced sheriff's deputies from, with prior law enforcement experience. The ARP committee requests board approval of this funding for recruitment and retention efforts, along with the approval of the Associated Budget Ordinance Amendment B250487.
I'll open it up to question or comments from the Commissioners. I'll open it up to question or comments from the Commissioners. Anyone? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we, for the approval of the ARP Committee's recommendation to allocate 150,000 for detention officer retention and 200,000 for sheriff's deputy recruitment incentives from ARP freed up capacity or unallocated, for which the sheriff will provide a framework and basis for distribution in Associated Budget Ordinance Amendment B250487.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to, it's been properly seconded. I won't walk back through the motion. It's clear. I'd ask for your vote. Raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vault. We will go ahead and move to item 4C, Boards and Commission Process. I'll call on the County Manager to introduce the item.
Yes, during the January 14th, 2025 Board of Commissioner Policy Committee, you hear some nominee, you want to hear some policy changes regarding boards and commissions and the process. Andrew Tebby, Clerk to the Board, will present this item and discuss any questions that you may have.
During the Policy Committee, we discussed moving the appointment process from a monthly nomination and appointment process to twice a year in March and November. That would be effective February 1st, 2025, if approved. The Chairman would create a committee to review the application process and instruct, make recommendations, and then instruct staff to lit, create a list for the March and November appointments, and then Chairman will appoint the Commissioners to serve on that committee, where they will review the applications and make nominations.
I'll open it up for comments or discussion. Commissioner Adams?
I just, I've got just a question. So the very first one, move the nomination process to twice a year. So how do we do that? I guess, I'm trying to figure out, people have terms. So how do, how are we starting off on that process? So that's what I just, I don't understand. So if somebody's got a three-year term?
The nomination, we will review the nominations and look at the terms, and they will fall in that spring appointment or that fall appointment, and their terms. Some of the terms will, they have requirements, some of them at the end of the year, so that term would take effect at, like, say your term ends January, December 31st, the next person would take appointment on the first, but the Board would meet and do the approval twice a year instead of monthly.
Okay, I got that, but suppose it falls between those when, so do they stay on there? So for instance, I don't finish up in December, so I don't make the March, right? But I come off with that term in April. Do I stay until November?
That is something.
I'm trying to figure out how you enlarge or close, if you've given people these terms, trying to figure out how, if you either shorten or lengthen, I'm trying to figure that part out. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Adams, one of the things that has to be done, and we talked about this in the Policy Committee, is also looking at, one thing that the clerk did is she laid out a matrix to show which ones are vacant currently, as well as which ones are coming. We also looked at terms because there was, because of COVID, there was some compression on terms. And so one of the first actions that the Boards and Commissions Committee is going to do is look at those to, to de, to better align the, the terms that are there, because there's some, there's some issues with the terms and the way they were compressed, as well as to identify when certain terms end, and if they'll either fall in the spring or the fall rotation. So what will happen is you'll have a matrix of every board and commission, when they're going to term out, and then when that seat would actually fall for the appointments, the nominations and appointments process. Some may get it, some may be appointed two months early, but they won't take office until.
But that's what I'm trying to figure out. So, so I guess that's what, that's, and that's not in there, so that's what I'm trying to figure out. So if you say maybe going to happen in April, you will still meet in March to make that.
Correct.
That, but that's not in this. I mean, it's so, if we spell that out in this, it makes it easier favor by the who's already appointed, because I, I just don't get that from this part. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. Makes sense, but I think it needs to be spelled out when we make that vote, that some people may get appointed prior to, but don't take office until they get appointed in March or November, I guess. I just, I just can't wrap my head around, I just, I just.
Any, any other questions or comments?
The terms, when we look at the spring, the spring and fall, they'll be divided up December to March for that appointment process, which will be spring, and then fall will be April to November. So they will fall in that process.
I got that, but, so, but I guess that's, even if you do that, and you, you either term out, you can either be there longer.
Yeah. So Commissioner Adams, one of the things, this is a framework. What will happen is the work of the Boards and Committee, the Boards and Commissions Committee will then have a heavy lift to do to, one, get it reorganized, get the matrix laid out. We know there's many vacancies right now. The first meeting that they're going to have is going to be, one, putting information around this, laying out that matrix, making sure we're informing the public, coming up with an education and communications plan. There's a lot of work that isn't in here. This is to change the Boards and Commissions process. It isn't to lay out the, the details of the, of what the Committee will lay out in the, in how we will rearrange or redo the matrix for the Boards and Commissions.
So that'll come back to the Board to vote on? Some people saying yes, some people saying no. So you, we're giving the Board the, the ability to do that and not this Board? So I'm saying, once you.
Commissioner Adams, I, hold on, Commissioner Adams. I, I'm not, you're, you're, what's being brought to you in front of you tonight is to change, is to create a Boards and Commission Committee, is to change the nomination process. Instead of doing it randomly or once a month, we're going to do it twice a year. We're going to create a, a new application, because our attorney pointed out to us that the application is outdated and needs some updates. We're going to instruct the staff to create this matrix that we talked about to lay out so that each person would know when they would rotate off and when the applications would open for those seats. And then we're going to appoint this Commission tonight, effective tonight, and then I will appoint as Chairman, like I do on the other Commissions or Committees, I'll appoint Commissions to serve on that Committee. That's the framework that we're appointing tonight. That provides us a framework that we need to move forward for the Boards or Commissions. Stand by, Mr. Adams, or Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to add, so the Policy Committee did meet on this item. It was referred to this Board by the Policy Committee, and we did have a unanimous vote at that time to recommend this approval. So as Chairman of that Committee, I just wanted to make sure that the full Board was aware that it has been through Committee process and that the Committee is advocating for approval.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just trying to get clarity as to, once it goes back, does it come back to this Board to vote on? That's all I, that's all I'm thinking. Once they set whatever.
Any nominations or appointments would come back to this Board for approval.
All right.
This Board is a nominating body, and it's the appointments body. Go ahead, go ahead.
The second question, I guess, is, once the Committee's done, there will be a metrics as to how members of this Board can nominate to the Committee to be able to appoint. That's what I'm saying is not in here.
Yeah.
We can assume that, but I'm just asking.
The process doesn't change, so every, individuals that wish to be, serve on a Board from our community will apply. There'll be a new application that will be online. All those applications will go twice a year to a Board, to a Committee. Those Committees will go through that laundry list of applicants that we normally have. They will, will that down, they will make a Committee recommendation. This Board, as it always has, can make nominations.
Okay.
From the floor, because that is your right as a Commissioner.
Thank you. That's all I wanted. I just wanted to have that, that clear, because it wasn't in this.
Glad to clarify for you, Mr. Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Fairclough?
I'll just try, I just cut my line. You just answer my question.
Vice Chairwoman Jones?
This might be something that the Committee itself, the Board and Commission, that's going to look through the applications. One process that might be, be different, or I don't know if I'm at a term to say this, we will be able to nominate from the floor, but because, but I do believe prior, when you nominate from the floor, you don't necessarily have to fill out application. That will be a change. If we nominate somebody from the floor, they don't have to fill out an application, they don't have to turn out a resume. In the new process, you can, we will be able to nominate someone from the floor, but just as the rest of the general public has to fill out an application, so will those that we nominate from the floor.
Are there any other questions or comments? And I hope we've clarified, any questions? Any other questions or comments from the Board?
I didn't understand her comment.
Hold on, Commissioner Fairclough.
Could she clarify that for me? I did not understand.
When we nominate someone from the floor, they don't necessarily have to, when we nominate someone from the floor, like, if I want to nominate someone to be on the, on a control board, they don't have to fill out an application.
They don't have to fill out.
Right, yeah, they didn't prior.
No, they, they do, we contact them and ask them to fill out an application.
After they're nominated?
Yes.
Okay.
But in this case, you're going to have to do that, you know, before the fact. Like, if, if I go to someone and say, I want to nominate you the same way someone else, if I wasn't nominated from the floor, would have to, that would be, that's what I mean, that would be the difference. If I want to nominate someone that's excellent and qualified, the same way everyone else that would not get nominated from the floor would have to fill that out, they would as well in advance. In other words, you know, usually if we're going to nominate someone, we've already went to speak to them, and we've told them, I want to consider you, will you be able to take on this responsibility? So from the time I go and ask somebody, can I make your nomination, then before I can come out on the floor to nominate them, their application, if they're interested, well, that's the difference, will already have to be in there, not after the fact, just like the regular public. If you don't get nominated from the floor, you have to fill out an application. We want a fair, equal process, so will individuals that we feel, that we might feel are interested. So that will be the difference.
Thank you, Vice Chairwoman. Any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we move the nomination appointment process to a twice a year of March and November time period, effective 1 February, 2025, that we create a Committee to review application process and make recommendations, that we instruct the staff to create a list for March and November appointments, and that you, Mr. Chairman, will appoint Commissioners to serve on the Committee to review applications and make nominations.
Is there a second?
One second.
So the motion made and properly seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'd ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move to, thank you, Board. We'll go ahead and move to item D, Gray's Creek Infrastructure Stop Gap Measure for Gray's Creek and Alderman Elementary Schools. County Manager?
Yes, Chairman Devier, on a couple of occasions, back on December 10th and our most recent Agenda Session, we talked about options for getting water to the two schools in Gray's Creek. Amanda Lee, General Manager for Infrastructure, I mean, General Manager of Natural Resources, will present the recommendation and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, County Manager Greer. So on January 14th, staff presented opinions of cost on three options for Gray's Creek and Alderman Schools. Option one was a point of use system, that is a reverse osmosis system, to be installed at plumbing fixtures or at plumbing fixtures like sinks and so forth. Option two was a point of entry, that would be a granular activated carbon system. Option three was to look at installing deep wells as the current wells are in the superficial aquifer. After consideration of cost opinions and schedules, the Infrastructure Committee recommended moving forward with option one, which was the RO system, and exploring the other two options, including the GAC and well replacement. We will be coming back to the Board with action items in the future on those two issues, on those technologies.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Fairclough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this is for the County Manager. I'm just trying to figure out how this is going to work out. When we, when we endeavor to do this, are we just going to give the money to the Board of Education to handle this, or are we handling, or are we actually making improvements on property we don't own?
We will, we will install the, install the, the equipment for option one, based on our conversations with the schools, they're amenable to that. We want to hand it over to them, and we will try to schedule it in the summer, because it'll only take two to four months, and we anticipate, once we get in there, we'll know that it'll take about, maybe two to three months at the most. But to answer your quick question, yes, we're going actually installing, and the schools are amenable to that, based on our discussion in the Infrastructure Committee.
All right, okay. How about ongoing repairs and maintenance of the system, whatever we end up with, is that the schools?
That would be the schools, and that would be part of the annual funding that we technically give to them to do anyway, so.
Any other questions, Commissioner Fairclough? Any other questions? Commissioner Tyson?
I just had a comment. With, with what a situation that we have in our rural areas in Gray's Creek and all, I just wanted to commend the Infrastructure Committee for taking this initiative and for pushing this forward. Our children there and our children in all the parts of the county deserve to have clean drinking water at their schools. Right now, you know, these schools, they're drinking out of bottled water, so it's important that we, as a Board, are pushing forward with this, this, this item, and I would just like to voice my vigorous support for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Tyson. Any other comments from the Board? Real quick, County Manager Greer, if you can just make sure, I want to make sure the public understands, so we're looking at three options, but in parallel, we're still in conversations based on the agreement that was signed last year with PWC as well.
Yes, we're still in conversation with PWC, and things are moving, progressing real quickly. We'll probably be bringing some additional actions along with the MOU in the next two to three months.
And just to reiterate, this is about a, about a four-month process, once we.
Option one, four-month process, and after we investigate options two and three, at the most, those process, that process will be additional seven to 11 months, I would say seven months to a year. So within a year, we will probably have not only the water situation from an immediate method taken care of, but also long-term range, we'll have it solved to, for the both, both elementary schools.
Thank you, Mr. Greer, or County Manager Greer, I appreciate your, your and the staff's work on this. Hearing no other comments, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion. Commissioner Patel?
Yes, um, for the safety of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Do you need to say?
No, I'm, I'm trying to get my thoughts together. Go ahead, I'll vote yes when he makes the motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Patel.
I'll say the motion, too. Okay. Thank you. So in order to get safe, clean drinking water to our young youth, especially in Gray's Creek and Alderman Elementary School, the Infrastructure Committee recommends, and I motion to approve this going, the option one going forward, adding point of use water treatment to Gray's Creek and Alderman Road Elementary Schools, and directing staff to investigate the other two options of adding point of entry water treatment and installing deep wells.
Commissioner Council? We've got a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. I'd ask if there's any discussion. If not, I'd ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Board. That's extremely good work to make sure we have safe water for our children at these schools. We'll go ahead and move to item five, excuse me, nominations. Nomination A is the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees. And I'll go ahead and call on Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move to direct, to the Board of Commissions based on further actions for the new policies that's been put in place, please.
I'll second that. There's a motion to move to direct this to the Boards and Commissions Committee for further action based on the new policy that was just approved. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I have, Mr. Chairman.
I don't quite.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner? Commissioner Adams, and then Commissioner Council.
So, I, I just, I guess I want to make sure, because the hospital tends to have a different view of whether you're still in that seat or not, if it's up. So, I, I guess, as we do this and make that motion, that for these appointments, which are ours, that they will continue until that Board meets, if, if I can add that to, to that, and that will at least continue that forward.
For the appoint, appointments made by the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
They will, they retain their office until their successor is appointed and qualified.
I understand that, but that was, I just want to make it clear to the hospital Board, so.
Commissioner Adams, any other questions?
No.
I think that attorney will, will clarify that with the, with, with the hospital, make sure they understand it. Commissioner Council?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, maybe I can't count to three. Shannon, the only one that is in question then would be Pamela Sugg's story, because she's not eligible for reappointment, other others are.
Commissioner Council, what the Vice Chairwoman has asked is that we move this action, so the entire nomination goes to the Boards and Commissions Committee that we just approved. So, we're going to move this action back to a Committee. We're not going to make any nominations tonight. That's the motion on the floor.
Sorry.
That's okay. We've got a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. Is there any other discussion on this motion? If not, I'd ask for your vote. An affirmative, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman Devier, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Fairclough. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
We'll go ahead and move to Item six. This is the appointments, and the item, Commission is up for appointment, is the Civic Center Commissions with four vacancies. I'll call on Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, I'd like to move to direct to the Board and Commissions for further action based on our new policy that's been put in place.
Second.
We have a motion to move these appointments to the Boards and Commissions Committee for further actions based on the new policy. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, and I think that that, if I'm not mistaken, was for, what we approved, was, let me go back and see, was to make nominations and appointment process. This one has already been approved by a Board to be for an appointment, and I don't think you can, I would be in opposition to saying that this can go to that Committee that was already formed just a few minutes ago, when these have already been voted on through the nomination process and actually at the appointment process. I, I would ask for some clarification from the County Attorney.
Mr. Attorney, go ahead. You have the floor.
If the, if you have appointees who have already been appointed, unless this Board takes action to suspend that appointment, and they haven't taken office, then they would have the right to, to take the oath of office at, at a meeting they attend, but I don't think the Civic Center Commission has met since.
There hasn't been an appointment, Mr. Attorney.
Okay.
This appointment has not been made.
Okay. It's been through the nomination, but not.
Hold on, Mr. Adams. Hold on, Commissioner Adams.
If the appointment's not been made, then it's not an issue at all.
So, Mr. Attorney, I understand that there's no, there's no issue with this action based on.
I, I just misunderstand, Mr. understood Commissioner Adams, I thought he was indicating that, that these appointments had been made.
No.
Just the nomination.
Commissioner Adams, any other questions?
No other questions.
Are there any other questions before I call for the vote? If not, I'd ask for your vote on the motion on the floor, and please raise your right hand in affirmative.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairwoman Jones.
I'm just mixed up, I'm sorry.
Chairman Devier, Commissioner Patel, voting in opposition, Commissioner Fairclough, and Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. At this time, we will go ahead and recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board, and we'll move to Item seven, Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Item of Business, Graves Creek Infrastructure Stop Gap Measure for Graves Creek and Alderman Elementary Schools. County Manager Greer?
Yes, we just approved this one as Item four D, as the Board, you have to approve it again as part of the Graves, since the Board is the Board for the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District, you have to approve it again.
Any questions on where we need to move forward? Commissioner Adams?
I'll just make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
And that motion is?
Recommend approval of moving forward, option one, adding point-of-entry water treatment to Graves Creek and Alderman Road Elementary, and directing the staff to investigate the other two options of adding point-of-entry water treatment, installing deep wells, excellent job by the Board of County Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
There have been a motions, we're properly seconded, any discussion? Not, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand in affirmative.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and adjourn the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting, and we'll reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. This time, I'd ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session?
Commissioner, hold on, Commissioner Tyson, sorry, we'll do it, to make sure we get all the language.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to go into closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS one four three dash three one eight dot one one A three, and an economic development matter pursuant to NCGS one four three dash three one eight dot one one A four.
Second.
Got a motion to move, motion and seconded to move into closed session. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move into closed session. Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and call for a motion to come out of closed session.
Maybe we come out of closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session, there was no action in closed section, in closed session. I'll ask your vote, raise your right hand. No further action from the Board, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good night.